Rachel. Oh, it is. It's unbelievable. No.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Polk County School Board Work Session for the Superintendent Search. And I want to thank all of our board members for joining us here today. And at this point, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving and had some time for some rest and relaxation. And now we move on with continuing the work of the board. And so today, we are very happy to have Florida School Boards Association with us. Today is November the 30th, 2020, and we are joined by Andrea Messina, the School Boards Association Executive Director, Mr. John Reichert, and Dr. Bill Vogel. And so with no further ado, this is going to be a long work session, so I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you so that we can go through the agenda that you've prepared for us today. Ms. Messina?
Thank you. This is working, yes? You guys can hear me? Okay, perfect. We are so excited to be physically in a room with all of you and all of us. And so it is indeed our delight to be with you here today. We allocated as much time today as we did because we wanted to make sure before we start these advertisements, which are going out the end of the week, that we have everyone's input as needed so that we can make sure that these advertisements reflect the will of this board. We know that you have seen along the way some of the input from the community live sessions. So I just want to review quickly. We had six live input sessions. We had three community input sessions, two employee groups, and one input session with students. A total of 120 people participated in those live input sessions. We had the one virtual input session, which had 152 people participate in that. We kept it open for a week. And we also had your online survey, which had over 2,200 people reply. So you all, I want to make sure you know, you all have received probably more community input than we have in many other districts. So we're very excited about the level of that community input. And the results of those surveys, the executive summary and the results of the virtual and the online surveys were provided to you, I think, last Friday. So what we've done is we've taken all of this input. Now, Kay did ask me specifically about the Spanish translation of some of the responses. So Rachel's team is going to be working on that, and we'll have that available when it comes through to us. But what we've done is we've proposed, Dr. Vogel is going to walk through with you, it's actually not the qualities, but the qualifications. I should have said qualifications, and I wrote qualities. But it's the qualifications. And we want to walk through with you what our recommendations are that is based on all of that input we just discussed, because some you will want to have minimum qualifications, and some you'll want to make as preferred. So, Dr. Vogel, I'm going to turn it over to you to start with that section. And if you'll look in your notes, it would be, there's a page that says minimum qualifications, preferred qualifications, and then there's contract terms under that. Actually, before I do that, let's go back to the input results. Is there anything that you all saw from the input results that you wanted to bring to your peers' attention, or to our attention, or to the community's attention? Were there any questions on any of the input results that were provided?
I had a question. On the staff survey participants, you had the different categories. What is the definition for other?
I'm sorry, Kate?
On the staff survey participants, you have different tiers of participants. And you have administrative staff, instructional, and support, and other. What is the definition of other?
Do you guys?
We really don't know what the answer to that is, because that was just a choice that whoever filled that survey out checked. So we're not certain exactly who they were representing, but they didn't feel comfortable with checking another box.
Yeah, we did not define other. It was a self-select. So if they didn't feel like any of the categories described them, they would have selected other. I don't know what that might have been.
I'm just curious. So, thank you for that answer.
Do you, John? Yeah, just if they just felt like, for some reason, the others didn't describe them. Lori?
Yeah, I just want to say that we offered an incredible amount of opportunities, both in person, online, for not only community members and parents, and our staff, and as well as our students. We had a plethora of opportunities. And I just want to say thank you, because I think as the process evolved, we added more, if you will, along the way. And I thought you all did a really wonderful job of being able to accommodate everybody's request on this board and beyond. So thank you for that. I think a lot of this information is really critical as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And I will say, the virtual online input, we weren't sure what we were going to get from that because of how we had to structure it. But 152 responses, we were very pleased with.
That's true. That's true.
One thing about the surveys, too, is if board members would like any further disaggregation, zip code, your team did a phenomenal job on the survey, and you can request it through Rachel or the IT department. And just another comment, we really enjoyed going out and going through different areas of Polk County, learning more about it. So that really helps us do our job, too. So, thank you very much. And one thing I think is exciting is, we got it all done before this COVID spike. The timing couldn't have been better to complete all that. And I was very impressed with the safety procedures that you had in place at every location we went to. So that's a commendation to your principals and staff.
And I would also like to mention that throughout all of the input, there was some consistency in responses. I mean, you saw, there was a lot of pride in the teachers and the work that the teachers do. That really came out strong. There was a lot of comments about students getting individual attention, which didn't necessarily, the way I read it, didn't necessarily meet just through teaching, but maybe through counseling and some other services that you all provide. They also talked about your programs, your academies, and your magnet-type programs, and the type of parent choices that you all have. There was a lot of discussion about diversity and inclusivity. So you guys have a lot of strengths that I hope you are aware of. And there was also some sort of consistency in some of the areas that they knew were going to be challenging. Number one clearly was funding. Everybody knew that, and everybody seems to understand that. Funding also kind of equates with pay, because we know that the more you can pay the higher quality staff, and the more you can encourage your staff to continue communication, which 100% of the time, every single district we work in, every district says they can improve in communications. And also, like, engaging learners, maybe thinking of new ways to engage learners. So there was a lot of real valuable information, but I also think, for your purposes, there should be some affirmation of the work that you're doing.
I want to echo just by that. If I looked at one theme, I would say, people want the next leader to build on your success. Where, you know, this is a high-performing district. There's a lot of good things going, and we want to build on it where we are. And that's how helpful when we're talking with potential applicants. John, go ahead, John.
And just to kind of add to that a little bit, in more than one session, there were comments about the responsiveness of Ms. Byrd if somebody contacted her, which really kind of opened communications, and also responses from board members. It was, like I said, on more than two occasions, they were talking about the responsiveness of the current superintendent and the current board member. So that's kudos as well.
All right. So, Dr. Vogel, we'll let you start with the minimum qualifications and potentially the preferred qualifications. And let's get some agreement on these.
Sounds good. We looked at what your qualifications were the last time, and then we built on that a little bit. First, a master's degree from an accredited institution. Second, 10 years of educational or equivalent business or governmental experience with at least five years in an executive leadership position. What we heard from board members, and also as we were going out in the community, is we didn't want to restrict the applicant pool just to someone who has been an educator. There might be someone in a governmental position, or a business position that had experience. So this qualification would allow those people to apply. Another thing we heard loud and clear was that people wanted someone, and we also have that as a quality, to become deeply embedded in the Polk community. So we did add, must be domiciled and maintain homestead in Polk County within six months of employment. So you're not going to have someone living in an adjoining county coming to work here. So we did add that also. I wanted to comment on one area here, and I want to see if the board wants to clarify this further. When we talk about 10 years of educational or equivalent business or government experience with at least five years in an executive leadership position, the question is, is a principal position an executive leadership position? Now, some boards define that and say they think that that should be a district level, and some say, well, you know, a principal should be enough, because, truthfully, there are schools in Polk County where you have a principal that has more experience than some school districts. I mean, you have 3,000 students at a high school. You know, is that executive-level experience? So the question we would have is, do you want to define executive leadership position, including a principal, or leave it silent, let the committee and the board look at it at a later date? We'd like to get some input and hear from the board on this.
Go ahead.
I'm asking our seasoned board members in the past, or if you have that information, have we, what have we done in the past? Have we limited it in the past? Do you know? Do you have that?
We had it pretty much open.
Open, yeah.
It was pretty much open. It was not defined.
I thought we specifically wanted to make sure that it was district-level experience.
I think you do need to ask yourselves, if someone's been a principal for five years, do you believe that person could lead a district of this size? Because what will happen is, if you say a principal qualifies under this five years of executive experience, someone who's been a principal for five years, you will get people who have been principals for five years who may apply, and then they'll be in the same pool as people who may have had additional district-level and other experience. So it is, you need to be aware, it is one of those filtering pieces that will determine who stays in the pool, or who gets, you know, filtered out of the pool.
Anyone else have some thoughts on this? Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, I, what you said earlier about, we have schools sometimes that are bigger than districts. And I've always said that some of our high schools are like running a small city. I mean, and the nightlife that's involved, et cetera. So I think we have some qualified principals in even Orange County, you know, right next door with huge, large campuses, that they have had to budget for, and direct, and be responsible for.
And I feel, it all depends on the person. It really does. There are some people who may be at a principal level that are absolutely outstanding, and would make awesome, would make an awesome superintendent. And then there are others that maybe would not rise to that level, in my particular mind. But I don't know. I would be open to leaving it open, and let the cream rise to the top, is kind of how I look at it. Ms. Reynolds?
I do, I mean, I think that there's a very different feel at the district level, as far as, there's a lot of moving parts that I don't know that necessarily our principals already always see. However, if they were a principal for 15 years, and have moved to the district level in the past two or three years, I don't want them to be ruled out, because they've only been a regional for four and a half years, and don't quite meet that five threshold. But I understand the desire for them to have district level, but I also am hesitant to say that the 15 years as a principal, and then four years at the district level, don't qualify you. But, because it's just a very different.
Yeah, it's a great point, Ms. Reynolds. Great point. Yeah, excellent. So, yes, Mr. Wilson?
Well, I agree with Ms. Reynolds. I think that the experience at the principal's level is relevant, but I think it also should be coupled with experience at a higher executive level. And maybe that's four years, maybe it's three years, so maybe it's just two years. But some experience at an executive, at a cabinet level, in addition to the experience as a principal, I think. I think there are just things that happen at that level, at that cabinet level, that you can't, that you can't, trying to work through those things, once you're in office, can be problematic. It's a lot better to have that experience and know what the outcomes are and the consequences are of those, of your actions at a cabinet level. So I agree with Ms. Reynolds.
Excellent discussion, then. We'll just leave it the way we have it right now. And I think this is the kind of discussion we want to have today. We want to hear for your input. We don't have to define it right now, but it'll, like you say, it'll, it's something just, you all need to be aware of.
I will say, Mr. Wilson, under preferred, we do have one that talks about the executive piece. We have the word principal in there. So maybe what we'll do is remove the word principal from the preferred, because it would be included in the minimum. And then the preferred would be superintendent, assistant superintendent, or other position of similar responsibility.
Okay, we'll do that.
Ms. Reynolds?
My preference would be to leave principal into the preferred qualifications, because I would like for them to, at some point, have been in the classroom in a principal.
I agree with removing that.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll do it. Let's look at the preferred very quickly. Doctor degree preferred. Then here's one that we deviated a little bit before. We have experience in a school district of at least 25,000 students, or a comparatively sized government or business organization. We devi, the last time you had that as required, this time we have it as preferred, because, first of all, Polk County is probably one of the largest school districts in the entire nation. They're probably in the top 25, maybe, or 30. I'm just estimating. But you don't want to exclude anybody. And when we had our community meetings, people were saying that they need, we need to have a bigger pool than just restricting it to that. I know it's going to be very important, that's the preferred qualification, but it's not going to restrict other people from applying. So that's one deviation from the last time you had this search. So I wanted you to be aware of that.
Excuse me. And I just want to point out, if you're looking for someone with specific superintendent experience, most districts across this country don't have 25,000 students. So you may find someone who's been a successful superintendent, but they won't have the 25,000 students. Or you may have a deputy or an assistant superintendent that's had 25,000 students, but not been a superintendent. So it's sort of an either/or that we wanted to point out.
So being in the preferred, then, allows for that. Is that what you're trying to say?
Correct, right.
It doesn't exclude it.
Okay.
This is why these meetings with the community were so helpful, because John specifically asked that question, and people said, well, hold it. Let's talk through this thing. So that, we're good on that one. Now, the third, experience as a superintendent, assistant superintendent, and then we've left principal in now, Ms. Reynolds, or a position of similar responsibility in a government or business organization. So this kind of defines a little bit of what you prefer, but it's not restricting, as restrictive there. Yes?
I just want to confirm, you think this, if somebody was reading this that wasn't currently in a public school, that they would be receptive to it? Because we've talked about broadening prospects into post-secondary or other business that's not K-12. Not that that's going to work for us, but to be able to pull applicants from them, do you think this would be, if they read this, this would be something they would be receptive to?
I think so, John. Yes.
There are many advertisements for superintendent positions that do not include the words equivalent business or governmental experience. So having that in one of the minimum qualifications, and also in a government or business organization under preferred, it says it twice. And there are many that don't include it at all.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. So I'm hearing a consensus from the board that we have our minimum qualifications and our preferred qualifications, then. And I think this will bring us a very strong pool of applicants. Go ahead.
Is there anything that you'd like to add that you think we've missed?
Okay, we also want to point out, it's these qualifications that will help build the advertisements, and it's also these qualifications, as well as the qualities that he's getting ready to go through, that your citizen screening committee will use to filter the application. So these are going to be those filtering items that they're going to use. Okay? Okay, great. Okay, the, next, we have contract terms.
Qualities are next.
Want to do the qualities? Okay, we'll do qualities next. What I did is use a, and I believe all board members have received this, and it's desired qualities. And these, what I did is used a non-scientific method of getting all the input from what we heard at all our sessions, in person, and looking at all the surveys. And I came up with a list of 13 qualities that we would put in the brochure, and that what we would do, as Ms. Messina said, the committee would look at these qualities, and then evaluate the candidates based on the qualities that you have in front of you right here. And I've tried to focus on every one of the areas that I heard during our pre-search, that the board members felt, and everything that I heard. So we're open for any questions about it. If there's some that you think, if we think we need to add more, or if we need to change any of the wording on these, we'd be more than happy to do that. But that's what these 13 represent.
Ms. Miller?
I just, I know you haven't mentioned here proven leadership in business operations. Our budget's almost $2 billion. And for a couple of the board members, that's been a priority, as far as having, you know, finding someone that has that kind of experience in managing budgets that large. I just want to make, and all these things are very important, but I just want to make that a concern of the community. They're wanting that kind of experience.
Yes, ma'am. I've got, looking at number six, I try to emphasize that, understands the complexities of the Florida Education Finance Program, and has the ability to analyze and articulate priorities in large budgets. And I think that's definitely is a very important, critical one.
When I read that, I read as FEFP, but there's more to that budget than FFP.
Definitely, okay. Is there a way I could change?
There's a concentration of, I don't know how to change the word. I'll let you be the wordsmith on that. But something that magnifies the need of a small corporation, actually a large corporation, running that kind of budget.
Okay. What about a period, Andrea, after FEFP? And then a rewording, then?
Yeah. Yes.
What could we?
You can flip those sentences?
Okay.
So that the ability to analyze and articulate large budgets is the?
I like that.
Lead, and then adding in the FEFP.
Ms. Reynolds, I think that does it.
Say that again.
Yes, just reverse those two senses.
Make it two sentences. So start with, has the ability to analyze and articulate priorities in large budgets, period, understands the complexities of FEFP.
Okay.
I like that.
Does that meet your needs, Ms. Miller?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good. Okay.
Ms. Fortney?
I just want to make sure that I say this out loud. So, number one, I understand. And number two, those that are going to watch this do, our search committee will use these to narrow down. And how would, just from my own knowledge, how would the folks that are on that committee go about finding data that supports any one of these 13?
Okay, go ahead.
First, when an applicant sees that these are the desired qualities, it really is the onus it really is the onus on the applicant to provide information that would support, maybe it's in a cover letter, maybe it's in, I mean, we've received some uh, supporting materials, things like that. In fact, one time, we actually even had an applicant photocopy. Uh, I'm not suggesting any applicants should do this, but we actually had one applicant photocopy, like, all of the plaques on the wall. So, I mean, you might be surprised what will come in these packets, but it really is, they'll, many of the applicants will provide links to, um, uh, data reports or things like that. But we also recognize that the community, um, screening committee isn't, it's not their job to have to really go through and, you know, I, they have to provide the support to give it to us, or to give to you. Once, once the applicants go through the community, the community screening committee, and then come to you, and it's the smaller group, that's when we will make sure that we try to provide whatever. But we also give them a screening guide, which, uh, Mr. Reichert, Reichert, uh, provides for them, and typically it would say, um, uh, it would say evidence of success as an instructional leader, and they could list what they use to support that statement.
Right.
And, and Ms. Fortney, also, uh, as a person who's receiving the applications, when they see the ad or the brochure, they'll contact me and say, what is Polk County really looking for? Because I don't want to waste my time nor their time. And this is really a, a document that I, again, redirect them to and say, these are the desired qualities. So, you know, if, if one of the issues is, you know, emphasis on kind of, uh, providing support services for ESE students, a lot of these folks will, the applicants will look at this, and they'll incorporate a lot of, or some of these key points in their cover letter. If not, they will emphasize some of their services that they provided and some of their accomplishments, even on their re- resume in kind of a highlighted fashion. So, a lot of the applicants want to see what, what are the details they're looking for, and this is a great document for me to provide them.
And, and one more thing, um, by having these specialized to your district, it will become very clear, those cover letters that are form cover letters, and someone who hasn't taken the time to look at these, is that fair to say? And that's really also another thing that helps to make sure that the people who are applying are people who really want to come to Polk County.
Gotcha. That's exactly what I was looking for right there. Thank you, Andrew.
This is a really important document. Another thing that you'll use that's for is when it comes time to interview the applicants and the questions. Because this is what the community i- is looking for in the new superintendent, the board members. And so you can formulate questions. We'll have questions for you and so forth, but they'll, a lot of those will be based on what you have right here.
Yeah, we will build your question bank around
Right.
these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
Um, nine and ten talk a little bit about collaborating with our local delegation, um, and our,
Eight and nine.
Sorry, eight and nine. Um, our local delegation, um, our city and county leaders, and then nine with the business community specifically for CTE. Um, but I do think it's important to also highlight collaborating with our non- nonprofits and our community as a whole in all aspects, not just for CTE. Um, while that's important, I think there's also a lot of things that we're able to collaborate, um, particularly through PEF, with getting things donated or having businesses come into our schools, um, which may not be directly a CTE program or a workforce program. Um, but I want to make sure that we maintain all of those relationships with nonprofits, um, and our community leaders, and also enhance them.
So if I word it like collaborates with local and regional business leaders and nonprofit leaders, or business, regional business and nonprofit leaders to develop and support career and technical programs and other district programs.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Or maybe career, comma, technical, and blah, blah, blah. So there's not so many ends.
Got it.
That's real important, and, and, uh, you know, so many exciting new businesses moving in. I was talking with Mr. Allen about that, that that the intent of this one is that, you know, if we have a new business coming in, the superintendent needs to go out and talk with them, do we have a CTE program that'll fit with that, or do we need to add a new academy or program, like I understand you're doing in Davenport and so forth. So that's part of that, but we, that, I like what you're su- adding, because that'll further support that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're maintaining those relationships as well, because
That's critical.
we've worked really hard, I think, over the past decade to build some of those.
Absolutely.
To build that, you're right.
Andrew, did you capture it? John, you had, oh, you got it. Andrew's got it. Okay, good.
Ms. Fields? Mr. Allen, Mr. F- Ms. Fields, Mr. Allen?
Yeah, so thanks for all the work on this, again, and I love the, the fact, you know, that we have such high level of community input to, to, you know, build this non-scientific measurement here. Um, it would be nice if we, and I, maybe this is already in, in the plan, in your works, uh, to note all the different touchpoints to, um, accumulate, you know, this, this quality, um, metric here. I was curious too, um, looking at, um, you know, you, you had some numbers next to some of the responses that indicated priorities, four particular ones. Do you see any type of priority scale on this from one through thirteen, or is it?
I really didn't try to use a priority scale.
Sure.
Um, it, it's so hard to, to go ahead and use, use a scale, because it is, like you say, a non-scientific method to do it. So I didn't try to, to do that.
Yep, yep.
And just anecdotally, the way those priorities are determined on the live input sessions is we, we have the group, did you guys have them talk in groups even though they were socially?
We didn't have them talk in groups. We did individually, yeah.
No, I didn't think so. So this time they didn't. It was all the, all the topics came in, and then they get, like, voting dots, if you will. Um, almost like if you've ever been to some of those local urban planning type meetings, when you get the dots and you can go around the room um, to tell us these are, you got so many votes to indicate the priorities. So it really, we're not, we weren't comfortable identifying them as true priorities, because they were priorities of the people who showed up that night in that room.
Sure, yeah, great.
And to add to your comment, um, looking back, having done this, you know, a few times before, I kind of found, um, that your top three may be different than my top three, might be different than their top three. So it's kind of cool, because you, when the time comes and we do questions, we can pick which questions we want to ask, and it'll typically be the two or three that are really important to me. So that way you get a really great diverse group of questions from, from this group. Um, but they're not just everybody. The top three are only these three things, because there's no way that seven of us, in my opinion, um, would all have maybe the exact same top three. So it, it lends some flexibility, so we can all ask the questions in the areas that we feel are most important to us. Um, and that way, when you combine it all, you, you come out with a really great opportunity for a new superintendent. So that's kind of my take.
And I know you had another question before we moved to Ms. Fields.
Yeah.
It'd just be nice to reinforce the fact that, you know, the several touchpoints we had in regards to our community input. And I, I'm assuming that's going to come when we get to that final brochure, but.
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Okay, uh, on number twelve, I would like to, uh, to add, uh, two other areas in proven le- leadership. That would be personnel. I don't see anything uh, related to personnel and finance.
Okay, great. I, um, let me go back and, uh, capture what Mr. Allen said if I could, Ms. Messina. I, I think, um, well, I like what he, what he s- said, uh, at the beginning, when we, when we put this in the brochure, we maybe have a short s- sentencing, these qualities, uh, were based on the, on the input of, um, c- c- the community at forums and surveys. Uh, and, you know, and to add some of those points on there. I think that's a good suggestion, because then people will ask, where do these things come from? Then we've got that documented, okay? Right.
And then, Ms. Fields, you wanted to say, um, when we talk about proven leadership in business operations, you wanted to add HR and finance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
On number thirteen, I just think that's a super, um, general statement. I don't know, should we define that? If deeply engaged, what does that mean? That can mean different things to different people, or have we already said it earlier and we don't need to repeat it? What do you think?
This was one thing that I heard. I, I'm open for any discussion the board members have. This is one thing that we heard loud and clear. They wanted a superintendent that was not going to be up in their office. They were going to be go into athletic events. They were going to be all throughout the community. There may be a better way of saying that, but that's what I basically meant by that. But I'm open for any discussion on it, because I think that's what everybody wants. How can we say it?
I have a thought. Um, Ms. Miller, what if we took thirteen and put it as the second sentence in number two?
I think that would be appropriate. I just think it's repetitive.
I like that. Okay. Add thirteen to the second sentence.
Just a thought.
It's a good idea.
Ms. Fortney?
Maybe I'm, I am missing it, but, um, I, I would, I would like to see, uh, a superintendent that has some, um, um, qualities relating to, uh, social work and, uh, mental health, and I'd like to discuss that with the rest of the board, uh, in general uh, on these qualifications. Um, because we, that, that to me is a, a priority. The social aspect of our kids and adults, actually.
So, as far as a quality of a superintendent, can you kind of give me a sample sentence? Because I'm, I'm not, go ahead.
Um, maybe we could just add it to, uh,
Maybe that would be the preferred char- the preferred qualifications is what I'm wondering.
I, I don't know. I, I, I just thrown it out there because it seems to not have a, a place anywhere. Yes, sir.
I've got an idea. Um, what about if we add on number three, successful experience addressing COVID challenges and school safety issues, including social,
Thank you.
emotional.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Write in that one.
I was going to do there after number ten, but I think that's better.
Okay.
Can you read what it will sound like?
Because we, we provide so much of that.
Andrea, what do we have? I think, I would say, safety issues including social, emotional.
Um, successful experience addressing COVID challenges, school safety issues, and social, emotional needs of students and staff.
Oh, that's really.
Like that.
Oh, yeah. Social and emotion. Say it again, social and emotional.
Yes, successful experience addressing COVID challenges, school safety issues, and social, emotional needs of students and staff.
Yes.
Got it.
Beautiful.
Good. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney.
And thank you, Dr. Vogel, for seeing number three. This is why I put him in charge of this group.
It's so funny, because I could almost, if I was waiting, if anybody asked me where I got any of these, I was, I think I could tell you pretty much, because I, in a non-scientific way. Okay.
Any other suggestions? Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the salary range, which is never a, uh, easy conversation.
Okay, um, contract terms, we, we talked about, and salary, uh, the position start date, we talked about being July one, two thousand twenty-one, and one thing that was real important for the board was that we have a transition period. So we've, that would be a mutually, uh, agreeable physi- transition starting in May. So we've got that. Does that sound all right? Think that's pretty much cut and dry, we talked about. Next, the, uh, we talked about, um, we're recommending a three-year contract with a salary range of two fifteen to two seventy-five plus competitive benefits. Now, you've all received a copy of the, uh, the salaries for appointed superintendents. Last time, you advertised two ten to two sixty, and the current superintendent's making two thirty-eight. So you don't have to pay the top, but we thought, uh, because of the environment out there, uh, if we can move to two seventy-five at the top, I think it would be an attractor. So that would be our, our recommendation for discussion.
Also, we, we know that if you're truly wanting to attract some non-education people, that costs more.
Yeah.
And so we wanted to increase that higher and to give you, hopefully, that appeal. It's kind of hard to attract non-business people to education, because we really don't pay what they might already be earning. Ms. Fields?
I, I guess I have, have a couple of questions, and I don't know if you all are able to answer it. Uh, what is in the budget as it relates to, uh, what we can afford to, to do? And then the other thing is, uh, if you can state again, why we, why we would go from two fifty, uh, to two seventy-five? And I, I'm looking at what some of the other neighboring counties are offering. And it says their base salary, so that's no way for us to know exactly what the superintendent is making, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
They could, they're going to be above whatever their base is for the most part.
With bonuses and things like that.
Right.
With performance, I should say.
Right.
Performance incentives.
It's very difficult, because every contract is somewhat different in terms of the benefits that go with that. But what we looked at is the current, the superintendent Duval right now is at two seventy-five. Um, and then, uh, you've got a district that's, uh, with, uh, less students at two eighty-two, when you look at the chart right there. So we, it doesn't really necessarily mean you're going to go ahead and pay that.
Right.
But I think it's more of an attractor. Uh, you have some, uh, districts that are, uh, smaller, that are paying a pretty good amount of money, right, also. Uh, so that's why we thought that way. As far as budgeting, uh, as a former superintendent, that would be, uh, you know, now, the budget process starts in January. So I'm not sure how they have the superintendent's salary budgeted, but, you know, you might want to budget for the top, but just as the example right now, you're not paying the top right now.
Right.
You don't necessarily have to pay the top.
It's a lot of money.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, uh, I think that, um, when you look at what all, look, in looking and looking at all the different salaries listed here based on the number of students, um, I think that it would be incumbent upon us to put this current salary range down. As noted, the budget process will start January, February, um, and even now, um, I did not ask what the budget is for the superintendent, but I'm assuming it's what she's making. Um, however, I feel that if you're going to go out and seek the cream of the crop to lead a district, in these times, as difficult as they are, and for the amount of moving parts in a district our size, I firmly believe that we need to put a decent salary range on there. And I'm not sure if everybody knows how it works, but what happens is, and, and Mr. Bridges is prepared to talk about that this morning, what happens is, we put a salary range out there. As we get closer and narrow down the individual, then begins the details of the compensation package, the insurance, medical, um, car allowance. All the particulars, including the salary, is set during that time. So I think it's really important to put that salary range, because it gives the person out there, if they're a qualified individual, whether it's from an educational institution or business, to say, hey, I would, might have a shot at that. I'm currently making X. I might be able to come in with Y, because I'm moving from, I don't know, pick a state. Um, so I think it's important. That doesn't say we're going to pay that person that amount, but it gives some flexibility in the negotiations process. And then we, as a board, all seven of us, when that person's before us and they say, look, I really need X to come to Florida, then we can say, yeah, we're ready to pay it, or no, we're not. But if you don't even have it as an option, are you going to get the best qualified person out there? So I personally feel we should leave it at the recommended range. Mr. Wilson?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm not sure I agree with that. I, I, I understand the, the goal and the objective of, of, of recruiting and, and finding the best possible person for this position, but in reality, I don't see us approving a two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar salary, especially in these conditions. And I think it would be unfair to suggest to someone that that And I think it would be unfair to suggest to someone that that salary could actually be attained. And maybe I'm wrong. Maybe my colleagues would agree to that type of salary under these circumstances. But I think that would be incredibly unpopular right now, especially with all that's happening in the state of Florida. So, it seems a bit disingenuous to me. So, those are just my thoughts.
I also want to point out that when we give a range like that, so, right now, your superintendent's earning 238, and that's public information. People know that. So, depending on the experience that the person comes in with, let me go back to my previous example of an experienced superintendent, maybe from another state, but someone who maybe has, I don't know, let's even say 20,000 students or something like that. But they've been a successful superintendent for 15 years or something. And they want to leave to a larger district. It may take a little bit more than the 238 to get them to be willing to make that change. Whereas, if you have a deputy somewhere in the state of Florida, or even somewhere else, who might even be from a large district, it might be that they can come in at 220. So, it kind of is going to also depend on the experience that the person comes in with. But certainly, if you're looking for, for example, a deputy or a regional superintendent from one of Florida's other large districts, they're going to come in with a high salary to begin with, and they're not going to be willing to be a superintendent for a salary cut. That's just, we get phone calls, John answers many of them, where they say, how flexible are they on this salary? And we had a number of conversations on the salary, remember, in Escambia? And there were some people who chose not to apply because the salary was too low in Escambia, that might have been a great superintendent. John, I'll let you.
Well, and just to add to that a little bit, some of those calls are from people who understand this is a range, and they will ask, you know, what is the likelihood of going to the top? And I say, we want to look currently at the current superintendent's salary. They then kind of get a feel and a ballpark that the 275 is maybe a future earnings. It is not a current entry earnings. So, a lot of the applicants do understand this is a range, and the current superintendent's salary kind of might be a starting point for me. So, there, I would say, most of the folks understand they're not going to be applying for a 275 job. It's maybe a potential goal down the road with service and performance and things like that, but not currently.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, through this process, looking at several superintendent job postings around the United States. I was curious if there's, do you guys have a sense of protocol to the advantage of actually posting the number? And then, you know, for example, I was looking at the Seminole County position, and that one's, you know, listed, the base is 165 to 195. And then we look, you know, that's half the number of our students. I think there's 67,000 on that superintendent's search. But then looking at other postings, you know, and that's the only one that I can see in Florida. So, I'm not sure if you guys are seeing any other postings in Florida. So, and I guess these questions are just coming up in regards to how we, you know, value that, I guess, that number and posting that, would that give us a strong candidate pool if the number was posted or if the number was not posted? So, you know, like I was saying, I see the one in Florida. It's got the salary range posted. However, the ones around the United States do not, in other states. So, I was just curious if you guys have any thoughts, input on that?
I will say, many of the superintendent postings outside of Florida, they actually pay more than Florida superintendents do. And so, it's shocking to me how much some of these little districts pay in other states. I mean, it's shocking to me because they have small, small districts and they pay a lot of money. So, for Florida, we have just always posted them because we want people who are applying from out of state to have a reasonable expectation. Because many of them do not because they see the number of students. They know what they're getting paid for a smaller district, and they're thinking, oh, my gosh, this could be something. And then when they find out the salary, it's, you know, it wastes people's time, back to what John said. They don't want to waste your time, and we don't want to waste their time.
Right.
So, I hear some people not comfortable and some okay with it. Sarah Beth, Ms. Reynolds, excuse me.
You can call me Sarah Beth. As far as specifically the districts around us geographically, but also around us student number-wise, do you know what their health plan is like? As far as, I know there's several districts throughout Florida that have to buy into their health plan. In bulk, we still cover our employees' health plan, which is a huge difference, dollar-wise. So, I just was curious if that's something factored into those districts around us?
We have copies of the superintendent contracts. But the problem is, like, the original contract might be, and then they amend it, and we don't have the amended, because they don't have to turn them into us, that kind of thing. One of the reasons I bring that up is because many times, we don't recommend it. But many times, the chief executive has a different health plan that's built into their contract. So, that could play a factor in some districts, and it can play a factor year to year. So, no, we don't have that information. But we recommend that the superintendent gets the same health plan as every other employee. That's what we believe is the fair thing to do. So, that's my answer. We don't have that information.
Thank you.
John, did you want to add to that?
No, that's right. That's what I wanted to say.
Ms. Fortney, did you have something?
No, I didn't. Thanks.
Ms. Miller? And then I'm coming to Ms. Fields.
I just did, I mean, the last time we did an actual interviewing for a superintendent was in 2013. And that was Ms. Leroy, who was given 230,000. I understand the concept of wanting to show that. So, I'm kind of in the middle. I don't really have, I'll let my colleagues decide on this one because I think it can go either way. I don't want to be disingenuous in advertising an amount that we probably, most likely, would never agree on. But I understand that it would be advantageous for us to pull in as many resources and other, you know, people that might be interested from different places. So, I'm just curious, too. When you talked about bonus programs, I'd like to have a conversation later about how that works because we do not offer that, that I'm aware of, as far as how we give the incrementals. And that might be something we build in later on. I just, in this kind of timeframe of eight years, do other districts, how does their salary schedules change?
For the superintendent specifically?
Yes.
Do you want to answer that, Bill, or you want me to?
Yes. Normally, when a superintendent's hired, they pretty much stay at, close to the amount of money that they're hired at. And normally, their only increments are based on raises, and there hasn't been a lot, hasn't been a lot of money for raises. So, but one thing that we do that I don't think anybody else does is, when we get down the line a little bit, we'll do it, Ms. Cunningham. We'll look at the last contract that you issued with Wes, and then we'll review that with the board. So, the board members will have maybe a blank contract, and then we'll talk about some of those things. So, but it has been a while since that was, in 2013, it was advertised at 260.
Okay.
So, we, that was the top, and we gave 230. So, that's, I think that's a good example. That's why we thought, since it's been 2013, we needed to bump it up a little bit.
I will also say that in the last, you notice the salaries with asterisks on them. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. Those are ones that have been hired since, if you notice the sources on the back, the superintendent's base salary is based on a report that goes to the Department of Education each year. So, we pull the salaries from the report to the DOE, but the ones with asterisks are the ones that have been hired since that report last came out. So, these are the newer hired superintendents. And if you look at those numbers, you'll see, and we can attest, that those numbers are higher than the departing superintendents might have been in some cases. So, for example, and this is just a fact, when you hire from within, typically, the salary's going to be lower than if you bring somebody from outside, partly because you have to incentivize people to come to your community. If you put an interim in and then make that interim permanent, typically, that would be a lower overall salary than if you had done a search. Is that fair, gentlemen? So, when you look at some of the districts, like, we could, we know, because we've worked with these districts, this one, if you go, well, that looks like a little bit of a lower salary compared to the number of students in that district, we could look at it and maybe say, oh, they hired interim that they then gave the permanent job to, which sometimes explains why it's lower. But that's not what's happening here unless somebody from inside applies. So, we're doing a full-on search. So, in those instances, we typically would see higher salaries.
You know, another example we had in one of our recent searches, we had a person actually drop out because of the housing increase in prices. One of the top candidates. Because what happened is, since this, since COVID hit, when a person first applied, everything spiked, the housing prices. And so, that's another thing, that we think the higher number gives the board the maximum flexibility.
However, I will also say this. Conversations like the one we're having right now are important. So,
Absolutely.
when somebody calls us and says, hey, how flexible are they? Any one of the three of us may take that call. We would say, well, let me just tell you, we had a very long conversation at the November 30th board meeting. You might want to go back and review it because we want them to have a realistic expectation of what's going to happen when they come to this board for contract negotiations. As well as, we know, like John said, the exiting superintendent was making 238. So, that's the starting point where you want to look. But it helps us to be able to answer their questions, and they will hear your comments and have a pretty realistic expectation. Mr. Wilson?
So, let me say, I appreciate that your position is you need to bring us the best possible candidates. And I hear what you're saying, that the salary range will make that possible. But I think the reality of the situation is, no matter how we feel about it right now as board members, once our community weighs in, it's probably not going to be in that range. I don't think, I don't see that happening. So, my concern would be that we bring folks here, and we have whatever, three, four, five, six candidates, and we have to start over again because we can't get to a salary range that, you know, they're happy with based on, I mean, the reality is, if I'm looking for a job somewhere else and I see a salary range, I'm going to go straight to the top. I'm going to say, look, I have the background, the experience, the credentials to earn that range. So, when I start talking to HR, they say, sorry, you're not going to be in that range. I'm going to say, fine, then I'm not coming. So, you know, I would, my concern would be that we end up not getting the best possible candidate because we're sending folks home saying, look, we just can't meet those salary requirements. So, those are my thoughts, and I respect my colleagues on the board. But I think once our community weighs in, that we're not going to be at that range.
So, then, let me ask you this. The last time this was advertised, the high point was 260. We were recommending 275. Would 270 be more reasonable to you, or 265, or 260?
Well, we had a superintendent that we all agreed was outstanding. How do we justify paying more than that for somebody else? I'm not sure I can get there. And I'm not sure the community will be able to get there either. So, that's all I'm saying.
And I'm going to start over here with Ms. Fields and work my way this way.
I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, if we had not been blessed enough to get Ms. Byrd to be the superintendent, Mr. Wilson is correct, we probably would have had to have more salary paid for that position, probably. So, when we look at this salary scale, it's not realistic in that what we would get if we get someone who comes in with a lot of experience, with a wealth of experience. We know that. I guess my thing is, when we get ready to negotiate the contract, that's when the salary will be determined. And there's a lot of going back and forth with that. I I don't have a problem with the range being the 215 to 260, maybe. I think 275, right now, we don't know what's going to happen in Tallahassee. We don't know how it's going to impact us over the next year. I would not be comfortable with the 275. But I think I would be comfortable with 260, with the understanding that we want someone on that high end that has a lot of experience. They're going to be very well-versed and very well-experienced to even have conversation about being paid that high range. So, that's just my opinion on the matter.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
I don't have a huge preference in either direction. I could go with 260 or 275 being the top. But I do, as far as, to Mr. Wilson's point, I don't, I would be surprised if people automatically assume that they're the top, that they're at the top of that bracket. But I don't want people to not apply if we were to say the top was 240 or 250, and they think, oh, I would probably be more in the 215 range. So, I'm not, I think the more flexibility we give, the broader candidates will give. I understand not wanting people to think that the top is where they're going, but I don't, and maybe you guys have a better perspective of how many applicants think they start at the top, maybe. I'm just naive to think that that's...
I can't remember a single candidate that thought they were starting at the top.
No. In a recent search, you know, we always try to facilitate the initial conversation so we don't have any issues. And I was surprised, you know, we said, what do you think is a fair salary? They've been, the superintendent's been lower than I thought, really. They've been real reasonable. No one has wanted the top.
I just would be hesitant, if we say it, you know, lower, and they typically come in thinking, meet in the middle of the two, and that people are ruling themselves out because, okay, 225 wouldn't be enough, but we could go higher than that. I just don't want people to not apply because they don't think there's any flexibility.
Ms. Cunningham and then Ms. Miller.
Thank you. And, yeah, I agree with Sarah Beth. And the other thing is, when you look, remind everybody of a couple of things. This is a range. Goes from 215 to 275. It is a range. Secondly, if you recall, last two performance reviews that we've done with superintendent, she has declined any increase in salary because of the times. At least two that I can recall. There might be more. So, if you look at the number of students, number of employees, I mean, she's grossly underpaid. But she would have had increases had she wanted to accept those, but felt that she wouldn't. So, let me just say that. That's a huge, you know, commendation to her and her being a humble, respectful leader in times that we've been going through in the last few years. So, moving forward, I agree, I'm not saying that I'm going to pay somebody 275,000, but if you don't have a healthy range, 215 to 275, who's the math whiz in the group? Ms. Fortney, what's, split that in half? Is what? Two... Right. So, you're saying, if you went in the middle, they would, it'd be 240 something of a salary. I don't think that would be unreasonable if I was looking out there to say, wow, if I landed somewhere in the middle, I'd be around 240, maybe 245 for a starting position. I just think the range doesn't mean you're ever going to come in. I don't know of anybody even in business my whole life that would see a range and say, whoa, I'm just so good. I'm going to tell them I want to. It just doesn't work that way. It's simply a healthy range to tell people, depending on your background and your experience, where you might fall. So, I really feel we should keep it at what FSBA has recommended. Not because I would be in favor of giving 275, but I don't know the folks that are out there and where they're coming from and what their experience is. And all of that has a price tag. We all know that. We all work. We realize that. So, I know that you all have done a lot of searches, and based on what you've done, this is what you're recommending. I feel comfortable and hope we can go with this range to get a quality person.
Ms. Miller?
I am, I'm going to have to agree with Ms. Cunningham on the end of that there because talking to the business community, some people that I had met with, they were taken back a little bit by the salary amount, only because they're looking at it from a different angle. If it was a corporation running a $2 billion budget with our size of employees,
Exactly.
it would be much more. And then, they even suggested thinking outside of the box to how to, if we can't do it, how can we get the community to supplement? And so, I think you would see, if the right candidate shows up, I think you will see the community want to have that person. And $15,000 isn't, it's not, it's just not sufficient. I mean, it's not an amount of money to make a decision over. So, I agree with taking the recommendation from... So I agree with taking the recommendation from FSBA.
Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, ma'am. The board knows I'm not a fan of squishy language. But from time to time in the industry, when you see advertisements for executive positions, you will see language in there that says, here's the range commensurate with experience and qualifications. And you some, you frequently see a sub, a phrase that says words like, you know, anticipates hiring below the midpoint or something like that. That way you, you build in a little bit of flexibility in case you get a rock star coming in that, that you, that you, that the demands and, and is worth the higher amount. But it also takes into consideration, you know, the otherwise qualified people who haven't had the big experience yet.
I like that. We could add compensate with experience and qualifications.
I think we usually have that in our stuff. The, the language we don't have is that the board anticipates hiring at the midpoint.
I'm not sure we should put that in there.
Yeah, I don't know whether that's good or not. I know that sometimes you see it in corporate America.
You may want to hire someone less than the midpoint. Good suggestions. Okay, we'll add that. Compensate with.
Mr. Wilson?
So just very quickly, and that may be the case in education, but was not, has not been my experience in the business where I headed up HR for a manufacturing company and everybody came in, one of the tops. So that's my experience, but I could be wrong. Also, I want to, I want to offer this, and I could be wrong about this, and please correct me if I am. I don't think the superintendent rejected salary increases. I think what she rejected was a salary increase greater than what the employees were getting. So I think there's a difference there. Superintendent Byrd said she would only take the, the increase that the employees were getting. So I think that's a difference between saying she refused increases. I don't, not sure that's, I think that's a little bit misleading.
So then let's try to lock this in. Can we say 215 to 275 commensurate with experience and qualifications? Is that something that any of you are vehemently opposed to? Okay, then that's what we'll put.
Thank you very much. Final one we had was offer a three-year contract.
Can you use the microphone?
Yes, sorry. We wanted to confirm with the board that offering a three-year contract, which is pretty much standard in our business, was acceptable with the board because if we're wanting someone to relocate, it needs to be some period of time where they can purchase a home, establish some stability. And just so you're aware, the, the contracts in Florida by law have provisions in those contracts that the maximum payout on a contract can only be 20 weeks' pay. So there are legal provisions that also enter into that too. So that's why we like to advertise a three-year contract.
Ms. Fields?
I don't think anybody's going to come here without a three-year contract. I think that's just a no-brainer.
Three years appears to be standard. There are districts that offer a longer contract. Polk right now has a five-year contract, but that was negotiated previously. It was a three-year rolling. And when, when the board decided they did not want to roll, in exchange for removing that provision, the board extended the length of the contract. So there is a, a time certain for review and, and a conversation about renewal. But other districts do it variously. It does appear that the most common is a three-year, and, and, and there are many districts who still have a rolling provision in that, but others that are fixed, with fixed point of renewal.
Mr. Wilson and then Ms. Cunningham.
And I'm fine with that too, but the reality is the state of Florida sets what somebody can be paid if they leave. So it's, it's really, it's really irrelevant because that's going to determine what they get at the end of the day. And we had to restructure our contracts to, to meet that, that, that particular law. So I'm fine with that, but again, I know we have to do it. It just seems rather disingenuous because their state law tells exactly what they're going to get.
If candidates are coming from within Florida, they're going to get that. If they're coming from outside of Florida, that may be a surprise and it may affect their salary expectations.
That's true.
And we make that very clear too, when we're dealing with out-of-state applicants too, about that provision in Florida statutes. And that, that applies to college and anyone in public service. We look forward to working with Wes on, on this as we move forward with it.
Ms. Cunningham.
And I like the fact that we're talking a fixed contract. I personally would not be in favor of the rolling. I think it needs to come up and have a discussion by the board after the three-year term and move forward unless somebody feels differently. I, I like what you're presenting.
And we'll go through it word by word and section by section later.
Yeah, those, those future conversations, or at least the future conversation, when we really will go through each section of the contract, that, that's really important. And it's important to have that conversation before you are emotionally invested in a candidate, while you still have neutral sort of minds approaching the conversation. Because having those conversations now helps to prevent the, the contract negotiations from falling apart later. And we have seen that in some other districts, not with whom we work, but other districts that, where the board hasn't had the conversation of looking at the contract. It can really be problematic if we don't take the time to do that. I saw a hand. Yes, Kay, Ms. Fields.
I had actually meant to ask Ms. Susan there, and I forgot. I wanted to get copies of everybody's contract. So I think it would be wise for all, every board member to look at this existing superintendent's contract before we get further along into the process.
You're talking about your own existing superintendent's contract, yes?
And I think, I think Mr. Bridges had some to hand out today. I had asked him if he could prepare some in the event that we wanted to discuss that today. And I know I gave a few out to y'all, but if you'd like to pass one along.
Please, I would appreciate it.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
So then what we're hearing is that the contract terms will be stated. The school board is prepared to offer a three-year contract with a salary range of 215 to 275, commensurate with experience and qualifications plus competitive benefits. Dr. Vogel, do you have anything else?
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Ms. Cunningham, you're going to have to tell me if and when the board takes a break. Otherwise, we'll just keep on moving.
Board members? Would you all like to keep going or anyone would like to take a break? Take a break? Okay. So could we take, it is currently 212. Could we reconvene at 2:30? Take a 15-minute break?
Ms. Cunningham, can, can we, I know the agenda's somewhere left to get done other than the advertisement and the brochure and the citizens' boot. Is that it?
Yes, we have the, the application packet, the ad venues, the brochure and the screening committee. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's take a 15-minute break and have everybody back here at 2:30. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome back to the November 30th, 2020 special work session regarding our superintendent search. And thank you for allowing us to have a short break and now we're going to continue with our agenda. And I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. Messina.
Thank you, and Mr. Reichert is now going to lead us in reviewing the application packet requirements, the advertising venues, and the brochure. So, Mr. Reichert.
Thank you, Ms. Messina. We've had some previous discussions in some of our other work sessions about that all interested applicants would submit their packet directly to me. And then I would disseminate those applications, the complete packets out to board members. What we'd like to discuss today is make sure that we get the items in their application packet that you would like to have. And we would recommend that each applicant submit a cover letter along with their current resume, updated resume, a three reference letters. And I would say that we would limit it to three reference letters. Again, just for equity and consistency, there'll be some applicants who would like to submit 10 to 15 reference letters. Some of those reference letters may be eight years old. So, we found that it is more productive to ask for three reference letters. And then they really have to think about who they feel would be their best reference. The last item that we would have in the packet would be a copy of their college transcripts that reflect their highest degree held. We try to eliminate those persons that would send their maybe one page of an AA transcript and things like that. We just feel it's important to get the transcript for their highest degree held. When I receive those, that material, they usually come to me as individual documents. I will take and put the items in order, their cover letter, the resume, the three references, and their college transcripts into one PDF file. And each PDF file will be in that very same order for kind of your quick reference and review. The other thing that we do is each applicant that submits a packet, we will number them as applicant number one. So that when we get down to the end and the board has selected, say, four persons to bring in for as finalists. Some of the applicants will say, well, I want to be the first interview. Some applicants will say, I want to be the last interview because they feel they'll have the most impact being the last one interviewed. We simply say you will interview in the order in which your complete application came in. So, let's say the board of Polk County picks four persons as finalists. Then applicant number three would be the first person you would interview on that first day. Number 12 would be the second one, number 15, number 33 would be the last one. It just takes that debate away.
That's great.
The other thing is, once we post at the end of this week, what we would like to do is on the Monday morning, following each full week of advertisement, I would submit the applications that were, that came in that previous week to, typically we would send to the clerk to the board for her to disseminate those complete applications out to all board members. Typically then, we would like the board to see those first. And the next day, I would submit the complete applications received that previous week to Ms. Pleasant. And she would have those posted to the Polk County website under applicants. So, your community also can be kept up to date on how many applications do we have, who's been applying. That same PDF document for applicant number one that you received from Susan would also be then posted to the website in the next day or two. So, if that meets with your approval, those would be the four items that we would like to have in a packet. They will be sent to me. I will process them each week. And usually I'll kind of clean things up on a Saturday morning. Then I'll shoot them to Ms., to Susan. And she would have a Monday morning to submit out to the board members, if that would work for the board.
So, Monday morning to the board and then Tuesday to Ms. Pleasant?
Right.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Okay, so that kind of moves us through the application packet and the numbering system we'll use. With regard to the advertisement venues, I believe in your packet you do have this one-page document that is entitled Superintendent Search: Advertisement Venues. We will, we are recommending that the board would consider advertising in the American Association of School Administrators for the 60-day advertisement period at the rate they're thus provided. And I will tell you that from our past searches over the past three years, I kind of started collecting some data on where applicants find out about the ad from. And the American Association of School Administrators, about 21% of our applications come from that organization. The Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, they only, they have only six-week advertisement periods. We would recommend that we advertise for the six-week period at that rate. And we receive about 7% of our applicants from that association. Education Week, Top School Jobs, that is where we receive 26% of our applications. And they do have the 60-day posting period with the fee that's associated with that group. The Florida Association of School Administrators, FASSA, we get about 19% of our applicants from the state association. And they have their 60-day fee for posting. And then we also use the National Alliance of Black School Educators. We get about 10%, just under 10% from that association. We feel that by including our Latino Association of Administrators and Superintendents and the Black Alliance of, the National Alliance of Black School Educators, we reach some diversity, which again, we heard clearly from our community sessions, that that is a pride here in Polk County. So, we feel it's certainly appropriate to advertise in those two venues as well. The next, second part of this, we just like to further this as our free advertisements. Ms. Messina has some great connections. And also Dr. Vogel, we do, will provide our brochure and the details for application to the AAS, State Association of School Superintendents. Dr. Vogel has a listing of each of the state's associations. And we submit a brochure to them and let them know that if there's any additional information or additional brochures, that we would certainly send those to them. And the submission of the brochures just lets you know, we do this all electronically, so we try to avoid a printing bill here. Excuse me, we also do provide the brochure and the posting notice to the Broad Center. Of course, the Florida School Boards Association, Andrew will have that on her main site, her main webpage. The NAS, the National Association of Superintendent Searches, which Ms. Messina is a member of, they will each receive the brochure and details for making application and the process. And then also the National School Boards Association, Ms. Messina will provide information to that organization as well. The last item there at the bottom, and we do send the brochure and the announcement to every state school boards association through Ms. Messina. And also was sent it to all Florida school board members, all Florida school superintendents, and the Florida Education Legislative Liaisons, and the FEN, Florida Education Negotiators Association as well. So, that would be our recommendation for the top five venues. And that total price to advertise in those for the 60-day period and the one six-week period for the Latino Association would be right at $3,100. So, we're recommending that the board kind of give us agreement to go ahead and move forward with those associations. And we'll get that posted at the end of the week. I've already spoken to Susan and I'm going to come down on Thursday and just spend some time and get these posted on Thursday. So, they'll be out there Friday the 4th. Any questions?
What is the Broad Center? I should know that probably, but what is that?
The Broad Center is a national organization that has a commitment to identify non-traditional candidates for school superintendent positions. And there's also an academy and they have previously given districts awards for improving performance of at-risk students. And we have a contact there, so we send them the information and then they distribute it to the people that are in the Broad program.
And what city is that?
The Broad Center, I believe, was in California. It may have moved east. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sumatam Chair. With your okay, we'll move forward with those advertisements at the end of the week.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you. To review the brochure quickly, again, Rachel's done, I think, a great job with the brochure. It will kind of be a fold-over, you know, one piece of paper really fold-over for page one and two and three and four. The front, we wanted to certainly advertise the Polk County Schools students first. And we did put in the picture of the Florida map with the location of Polk County identified. Also notice about the School Board Association doing the search on the second page. Again, we kind of wanted to emphasize the students' first motto in Polk. We talked about some of the district facts and programs that are in the district. We also provided, we thought was appropriate to give the student demographics for Polk County. The third page will have a review at the top on the community, some highlights of the community of Polk County. Again, we heard a lot about community partnerships, so we wanted to put that in as an emphasis. That applicant should know there, there are, it will take some strong partnerships to continue what the previous superintendent has since there are 17 municipalities. And we wanted to highlight that as well. Rachel also put in some community demographics, which are also, we feel is important. And also some community facts, which, you know, address some of the lowest cost of living than the national average. And we thought that would be certainly a good information item to have in there. The very last page, as you can tell on the left, the qualities that we seek. As we finish up the meeting today, Dr. Vogel, Andrew and I will make sure that we have all of your updates on the qualities. We'll add, insert that there, the qualifications, the contract terms, we'll add that in. And the application process, I'll provide Ms. Pleasant with information on what to put in there. We do at the very bottom on the left have a statement regarding public records. There will be a lot of the applicants who feel that they're applying without their board knowing. So, we want to let them know, know in Florida, it is public records, it's government in the sunshine. So, the moment you hit submit, then it is a public record. And any parent or any newspaper in Florida can come get your application. And then on the top right of the last page, we've had the school board members and then the FSBA contacts. And again, I think Rachel has really put a lot of great information that candidates can look at quickly and get a good feel for Polk County and the area that they're considering applying for. Any input or recommendations from the board, please?
I will say you all laughed at the sunshine law thing, but we probably have one applicant each search who doesn't read that carefully. And even though we say to them, when we talk to them, that it's public information, the minute it's received, in their mind, they think public information law is from their state, which typically are not as robust as Florida's. And so, we usually will get somebody who And so we we usually will get somebody who applies and then withdraws really quickly. So don't be surprised along the way if when Mr. Riker comes with the numbering system of applicants. It'll be number one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, and you go, what happened to number six? Well, it was a complete application, it was submitted, but then it was withdrawn, so it becomes withdrawn. So just heads up warning on that.
Right. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Reynolds.
I have two things. I, thank you, Rachel, I had emailed her about the community partnerships. But I would like to, if we can add a couple other organizations in there, I think one of the coolest things about Polk County is all that. Is how our community pulls together, Polk Vision, how we work with United Way, all of those things that. My preference would be to take out the last sentence and include a lot more of the organizations that we partner with. Polk Vision, United Way, our EDCs. I mean, just looking at the list that we have of the county commission, the business community, PEP, NAACP. I mean, there's just so many organizations that we work with that I would rather highlight. How broad the base is of what our community partnerships are than just the two specific programs would be my preference. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. The second thing would be. I don't know how often it's going to get printed. And it's very difficult to look at the double page on like an iPad or a phone, it's just because of the dimensions of it. That in looking at some other government entities advertising, most of them just did a four single page like PDF type file. So I don't know if that would be an option, but that may be better for web viewing. Would be my suggestion, but that's all I had.
Can you clarify what area you're talking about, community partnership?
I'm sorry, the community partnerships.
Okay.
So that's on page three?
Yes, page three.
And Ms. Reynolds, just clarification, you were saying the format would be more of us to scroll down?
Yes, sir, so that it's not, because if you pull it up right now on the PDF, you have to like zoom over and so just so that it's a clean format.
And that's just a matter of how we put it in.
The reason being, my guess would be we don't get as many people wanting to print it out as we do.
Correct.
Viewing it online, especially in COVID age, I don't think people can even put printouts most places right now.
Okay.
Because you have to touch them.
So a sentence incorporating Polk Vision, United Way, EDC, that kind of thing, and if we had to, we could remove that last one?
Yeah, just kind of looking at our chambers of commerce is a huge one. I mean, I just think that we have a lot of partnerships in Polk County that are envied among the rest of the state. How many chambers of commerce go up and advocate for their school system when they go to Tallahassee? So I just want to make sure that we're highlighting those because that I think is expectation for the. Next superintendent to work with those partnerships.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Miller.
Yeah, I appreciate that about the scrolling on, that would be easiest, I I thought it would already look like that, but if you can input it where it's one. The only thing is, if this is looking at out of state, I don't know that they would know what some of that is, some of our organizations are. And I think school safety is such a huge national issue that I would. I want them to know that that we have, you know, a very strong guardian program. I don't know how we can incorporate all of that or some of it, so we don't lose.
You may be able to add a sentence like between the two, because there's some white space.
Okay, we'll we'll leave the schools, the school safety and security issue in and then work on adding some additional groups. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, so I know that we developed a second brochure, because the first one looked like this that was presented to us a while back. So, and I understand. That there was an interest in making it look a little different, but at the same time, these children. That Rachel had put together did an extraordinary job in putting the video and on and on. So my question is this, when you look at this, it's kind of dry, kind of boring versus the front of this. So my question is, would it be, could we leave all this? You know what I'm saying? And maybe put the picture with the kids like up here somewhere to have, because we are about the kids. I I I get it, I know we've put all this, but maybe that could be drawn, I don't know. Rachel, is that something that would make sense to you or no? Talk to me, I just feel really bad that that, I love that. Where are they? Oh, I didn't see it.
I actually love the fact that they're on the section that says students first. It's small, but I do like that they're there.
I really like that with the newspaper that says Superintendent's Search kind of. What do y'all think, or is it just me? In other words, this picture with the search up here on the top right hand corner, it's just one board member, I'm just asking the board. I just feel like, I know they're back there, but they're on the very back on the very, which you can leave them, that's a different photo. But this one that shows the, here we are, I just think is really cool.
I think this information needs to stay on the front.
Right, right, just putting the li- a little one up here, like more oval, yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fortney?
Exactly. Exactly.
And then just put the picture at the top.
Put the picture at the top or something, I I don't know what, but just seems like that's so cool.
Is anyone opposed to putting that on the front?
I think for me, I don't have a problem with it as long as it doesn't become too busy. That would be my only concern. And then the thing about the kids being on the back, that's where the applicants are going to spend all their time. Looking at the qualities and the qualifications and the contract terms and the application process.
So it sounds like everyone's okay with Rachel finding a way not to make it too busy and including that picture somewhere on the front. Is Rachel okay with?
Yeah, I was looking at her like, she said, no, it's okay.
Okay, and I just speak to Rachel about after we finish today, I can fill in the blanks on the back page. I'll get that to her this evening and then she can kind of begin to incorporate that on the back page. The other thing that sometimes board members will ask for is, would y'all as board members want to have any hard copies of the brochure? Once it's finalized, printed for you?
Yes. Absolutely. Maybe a dozen, I don't know, thinking for me, people that have said something to me about it.
I don't need a dozen, but I would like at least one or two.
Okay.
Sounds like they want some.
Okay, okay, I'll I'll work with Ms. Pleasant, we'll get some printed up and she'll kind of get them out to y'all, final version, yes, thank you. Ms. Messina, that is it for me.
Oh, my goodness, all right, Mr. Riker, thank you, you're so efficient. So then we will move to Mr. Vogel and the Citizens Screening Committee. You have a list that says draft Citizens Screening Committee. And Mr. Vogel can talk to you about the very comprehensive effort that was spent to try to include everyone's perspectives here.
Ms. Cunningham, she spent literally hours reviewing all of the agencies and individuals that board members submitted. And Mr. Riker and I met with Ms. Cunningham and what we did then is open it up for board members to give individual input. And we've, we believe we've incorporated all the board members' individual input into this list. And I will tell you, I think this effort has has been phenomenal, this this, I think tremendous work. And this is just about the best work I've seen in trying to get a a group that represents the entire community. So we've ended up with a total of thirty six people, which is a good workable number for us. And, you know, any board members have any suggestions or comments, we'd like to take those now. And then a final approval would be January twelfth. So we're open, Ms. Cunningham, you may want to, I'll start with you because you might want to talk about your efforts on this, it was been a.
And I also want to mention, though, just because someone's name is next to the organization, doesn't mean that. There's a difference between representative of and representative to. And so the the organizations did not select these people, right? You all put these names forward. And it is not the expectation that these people are going to go back and ask these organizations for approval of what they're doing. What we were trying to do was create a cross section of people in your community that represent different perspectives. And when the final list is presented to you on that date in January, which is.
Twelve.
The twelfth, it will be in alphabetical order by the person's name, it's not going to have the the groups associated with it. But we wanted you to see the different groups that had some loose affiliations here. So I'm sorry, but Ms. Cunningham, I did want to mention that.
Yeah, I think you said it all pretty much, I mean, it's been a great process. I thank everybody for taking the time to submit the individuals and organizations that were important to them. I think we worked really hard to try to get representation across the greater Polk County community. And I think this is a great group personally. So just want to say thank you, and I know there's been board input and suggestions and comments. And Ms. Miller, go ahead.
Just had a quick question because a couple of my, the people that I had chosen were people that reached out and said, wait a minute, I see an organization next to my name. And, you know, I don't represent that organization and this doesn't need to, they, they weren't going to participate as a representative. So my question is, I know when we get the list, it'll be just names, but when the invitations go out, we're not sending the invites to these organizations.
No.
They're going to their personal emails and or home address.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Great question. Anyone else, Ms. Fields?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for their hard work on. Condensing the list of names, because I know there were a lot of names. I feel like there was a little bit of confusion. Because of a statement that Ms. Andrea just made about the names that we have today might differ in January.
No, no.
Well, if Florida Southern College says they don't want Ann Kerr and somebody else in her place, that name is going to change. That's what I thought I heard.
No, no, we did not ask the organizations to send a representative.
I understand that.
So by, you all have determined who the people are. If this list is what you approved today, this is what you will get in January for the final list. It's just going to say Citizen Screening Committee and it'll be alphabetized by name. It's not even going to have the associate, the affiliation with the person. There's no, part of the challenge with having the groups and the people is the people have. Somehow they feel a responsibility to report back to the group. And that's not what this expectation is, the expectation is that the persons who are selected have a broad perspective across the community. They will bring that broad perspective into the Citizens Screening Committee and then they will do the task of the screening committee. Now, if if their community, if the if the organization that's listed here asks them about it, that's fine. But there's no obligation that they report back to the community. It's just that you wanted to make sure that we had people from the north, southeast and west. You wanted to make sure that somebody that is a business owner was on it and things like that. That our expectation is that the names are not going to change.
Well, some of the names did change from the, from the first one that we got. I know there was at least one name that changed and I thought it changed because it was associated with the group rather than the individual.
Correct, well, what what happened, though, is. Someone was not, in some cases, a person was not associated with the group and in some, a person had retired from the group. It was one another examples.
Tired in general.
Retired in general, and so what happened was, we didn't, they were not affiliated at all with that particular group. So that was a group that was important that the board felt needed to be represented, so we put another person on that group representing them. So we did have a couple situations.
So in some way, it is tied to the group, in in some way, it is.
It.
I'm I'm just saying, in some way, it is.
Some way, in some way, it is tied to it because that, the board thought that group should have at least someone who was affiliated with that group.
Who has that perspective.
Who had that perspective.
Right, and then what happens if one of these people that we have on this list say they don't want to serve?
Okay, that would be a next step, what would normally happen would be. The board, the, usually the chairman, we go through a process. Some board members have actually talked with people that, and and they've expressed about serving on the committee, others have not. So normally, we would send out a letter to make sure that they were interested in serving. So then on January twelfth, we could do a final approval. And if some people decided they were not able to serve, then then we would take that up on January twelfth.
Those would be the only names that we would expect would change.
Right.
Or be deleted if.
Correct.
They just couldn't, period.
Because the the other part of this that's coming up with the screening committee, when the letter goes out, will be to give them the dates and times. Of the screening committee meetings. And they are going to be conducted by FSBA. So if I was asked to serve, and I don't know it as of today, but in the next month, I'm asked to serve. But I can't be at maybe one or two of those meetings due to, then I would have to say, I'm so sorry, I will decline. But that's a process that we're going to go through. And if you had submitted that person's name or the organization originally, which I have copies of, Susan forwarded me that. Then I would say, Susan, contact Ms. Fields, you know, this young lady can't do it or whatever. Do you, do you want to find out if there's someone else from that group or from that organization? Trying to make sure we have organizational representation as well as community leaders. It it, it's difficult, I I agree with, it's been a heck of a process.
And and I understand that and and I I definitely respect that. I just think that if this happens again, there needs to be a smoother process, there needs to be better direction from the very beginning. As it relates to the people that we're going to submit and make sure that from the very beginning that we know what group they are associated with. Rather than having to come back and and do, do, do the names first. And then, and I understand it was hard, I understand that, and then trying to match the names with the with the organizations. And this is the first time that we've ever done this before. And so to me, a lesson learned would be that we need to make sure that we do the, 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 the company or the organization and the name simultaneously.
We respect that and we have, we have internally had that conversation as well, so we appreciate and fully agree with you. Thank you. Ms. Fortney?
Yeah, because I would have, I would have done it. I tend to agree with Ms. Fields, I I sent names and then another email I sent groups. And then I tried to, I guess, match the names with the groups. And so I ended up with not very many of my individuals that did not represent that group on the list. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, it it, it was a very difficult process and it didn't help that we were all virtual and it didn't, there's, there's a reason the three of us are physically here today. We don't want things to to not go smoothly for you and we recognize that that process did not go as smooth as you would have wanted. Ms. Reynolds?
I have a question about the meetings. So in the letter, it says they'll be held in person or virtually depending on COVID guidelines. If they are held in person, will there still be an option to participate virtually?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we, I have a. What would it be called? You know how some of your teachers probably in the classroom have a camera and they can shoot it out live? Okay, so I have a system like that that I'm going to be trying for the first time.
Okay.
With you guys, because it's a traveling mechanism. So we're going to see how that works.
Okay.
Yeah.
In.
Or Zoom if we have to do that, but go ahead.
Okay, and so just in the letter, can we make sure that that's clear?
Sure, absolutely.
If they are in person, there will be a virtual option? I know at least one of the people that I had asked said they were good for all the dates, but they were going to be out of town for one of them, that they can. Definitely jump on a call, but would, and it's someone that I think we would really want to be represented, so.
One thing we we did was very successful, we did, we did both. In one of our districts, I was actually onsite because some of the people wanted to meet in person and we could do the same thing. And then John and Andrea were on Zoom and it actually worked pretty well. We didn't really have any issues, so we kind of offered both, that both options, so we can. We didn't really have any issues. So we kind of offered both, that both options. So we can think about that again.
Yeah.
Because now with COVID coming up, there may be some people that just say, I'm not going to come in person. So we're certainly willing to do that. And I will tell you, this facility right here, this room is outstanding for that.
Yes.
So working with your tech team, maybe we can make sure that letter at least provides that option.
I added that sentence. Thank you. And it does help because, you know, me living in Tallahassee, it allows me to participate. Otherwise, it might just be them because I try to keep, travel to a minimum for the district. So it, it helps me be a part of it as well.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
And by that point in time with the way COVID, I mean, we may be doing
It may be all virtual.
Hundred percent ver- I, I, I think we need to allow for the flexibility as we move forward for the next month, six weeks to just, I think, ask for their time commitment and date commitment, but not an in-person or whatever, is what I, I don't know.
But I think like you're saying, that might be an option. Because we did this whole process by Zoom in one district.
Two districts.
Two districts, the whole.
Three districts.
Right. Three.
Sarasota, Martin and Escambie. Well, it's up to the board.
Martin was a hybrid. We had both going on.
Whatever you don't think.
Right. But we did, and it worked out perfect.
I mean, don't get me wrong. I definitely think that there is something to be said for meeting in person because I am so busy with meetings personally, but I, I do want to make sure that that option's available
Absolutely.
for the people that have been selected.
We do have this room reserved for the three meetings. And we've kind of spaced it out. And we can socially distance, you know, these, these number of people. And you're absolutely right. In-person is preferred, but we'll see.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
I was going to basically what, what Mr. Reichert just said. The preference is in-person. But if in-person is not feasible, then we have to do the virtual.
Absolutely.
And then the other question that I have, and I'm happy that Ms. Reynolds reminded me of it, is in the letter, it says, please let our search team know by whatever day it is. Who's the search team? How are they going to know who the search team is?
Oh, okay. Yeah, that, 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 because this letter would come from us. And I, I got you. I'll, I'll clarify that.
Thank you.
Because that's us. That's the three of us. And I also made the other corrections that you already gave me.
Okay.
I just didn't reprint it for you guys because I thought I'd get today's input, but I made all those other corrections.
Okay, thank you.
So, so then I Minor state, oh, I'm sorry.
No minor. Thanks for all the work on this, by the way. It's great. If, and I think this is maybe addressing Ms. Field's question or concern moving ahead. But let's just say one of the organizations, we reach out to that individual, can they appoint somebody else? Maybe a line in the text where it says, please let our search team know by this, if you or a colleague is able to serve to represent your organization. That could maybe remedy that issue.
That's one way to do it for sure. And we did do that in one county once where the organization selected. But I don't know if you guys want to just give up that ability. That's going to be for you all to decide.
I don't.
Ms. Fortney? Pull the mic.
Oh, sorry. I thought you said Fortney.
I'm sorry, I did. I saw Sarah.
Sorry. Happens a lot.
Yeah.
It actually does, more than you would think. I, I would be hesitant to let them choose, especially because we have so many that I think we may have on paper what they're representing, but it's different than what they may in their day job represent. That if they respond that they can't, then I think it comes back to the board for who do we want to replace them.
I think I heard Ms. Field say the same thing.
Right. I want to make sure that we have diversity. And I want to make sure that we have representation from the right voices, if that makes any sense. So definitely, I don't want to give that away. And the other thing that I had is in the letter, it says, I think it's like the fourth paragraph, attend our meetings of the CAC. Can you write out what CAC is?
I, that's up in the third paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there.
But it's
But you got CSC and then that's
Oh, 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 it should be the CSC. Thank you. I'm so sorry. It's got to be corrected. I wrote it wrong.
Okay, thank you.
That's the problem there.
May I just summarize? I think, okay, what, what we're, what we'll do is we're sending out the letter. And then there'll be a timeline when the people respond to Andrea, when they, when they're, if they are able to serve or not based on the conditions. Okay. Then if people are not able to serve, we will contact the chairman because the chairman has the list of everyone's and organizations. And then, then we'll go ahead, then notify that board member. And then we can add additional, that, that person, fill in that blank with the individual on the twelfth. Okay, right.
Ms. Reynolds?
It's Sarah Beth's easier. You can just say Sarah Beth.
I said that once, and then I forgot to my
A couple just small things on the letter. For, at the, the second paragraph, it says Polk County School Superintendent. Can we have Polk County Public Schools Superintendent? The Citizens Screening Committee in the third paragraph, is that, is the, is citizens possessive?
Multiple citizens. Oh, it's the committee of multiple citizens.
Do they have the ownership of the committee though? Or is it just plural? Should it be possessive?
I'll check again.
I don't know. But I, I don't know the answer to that. That's why I'm asking. And then in the fourth paragraph, if you choose to individual to serve.
That's already been corrected. Ms. Fields gave me that one. I just didn't correct that on the version you had.
Thank you.
She caught that the first day. I mean, five minutes in.
That's that English major in me. I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Thank God. I know it's been a challenging process, but I, you know, I always have, say, let's look at the result. And I think, you know, overall, we've really got a representative group of the community. And, and it was amazing to me how many organizations in Polk County support the schools. And I think, you know, we've really made a great effort to try to include as many people as we can in that committee. So thank you very much. Andrea?
So just to be clear, the advertisements will go out before the end of the week. The applications, as they arrive, will come to you on Monday mornings. Well, I was, Mr. Reichert will send them to Susan. Susan will send them to the board. And then, so we'll get the advertisements out this week. And then next week, we'll communicate with all of these people to send them the letter so that we can confirm their attendance. If they're unable to attend, they'll get the information back to me. We'll work with Ms. Cunningham. So hopefully by the January sixteenth meeting.
Twelve.
If, twelfth, see, this is why I said I don't know the date. If, so hopefully on that day, we'll have the final list of people who can attend all the meetings virtually as an option, as well as alphabetized list. And we'll be ready to go.
So we are not going to ask individuals other than who is already on this list as in, that may not be associated with a group?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I thought we had originally wanted to nominate individuals that may not have been associated with a group. We're not going to do that. Is that correct?
I, I don't think we
I think all the individuals, when we originally asked, were submitted. And then all those individuals were looked at by the group, and group, I say FSBA. And then they were
Tagged, identified with the group.
Um, yes, and some that were not necessarily with a group were not deemed as needing to serve on that committee. So if there's somebody in particular you're talking about, you might want to just bring it up and the group can discuss it. But I think we've got a pretty representative group with the thirty-six.
I, I, I just don't see any kids on here that I recognize, Sarah Beth. Do you?
Yeah, and we had this conversation a couple of weeks ago on the phone. I mean, I would love to add a student.
I would like to nominate Larry Chumney then.
What school is he from?
Lawburndale High School is a junior. Yes, I taught him at Stan Ball.
What I would like to say to that is I know that when we talked about having the student input, the night that we did that, superintendent reached out to a group of individuals that are in fact eleventh graders. I don't know if he's, he was on that team. But I mean, I, I certainly, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying we don't include a student. I just don't know if someone I just don't know what I don't know. How do others feel?
Is a student normally on the screening committee?
No.
In most situations, the board has not put a student on, on the committee. And we have had in a couple of situations, but in most situations, no. But recently, a board member put, a, a board put a former student on the committee who happened to graduate.
The previous year.
The previous year. And it's not insurmountable. I talked to Mr. Bridges about it. But we would need to get the parent permission. The students would have to attend if it was in person or so there's some logistics issues with that. But it would be a board, the board pleasure.
We did have, just so you know, we did have, the first time in Sarasota, they actually had a student who was, they had like a county student council type group and whoever was the leader of that. And somebody else had whoever their student representative was on their school board. They put that person on this committee. Ms. Reynolds?
My suggestion was going to be looking at that group that the superintendent has, maybe seeing if the students can select among themselves who they want to represent them. I think that will give the students from every high school then input on who is representing them to have one for the committee.
I would agree. And also one that was part of the input when she had the, that evening that we had the student input. I was not at that particular one. It was a different board member that was introducing that night. But yeah, maybe, I, I think that would be fairest rather than just
Because I think we all probably have
I don't really care. I just want a kid on there.
I would
Well, I appreciate that.
But, but thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Fortney.
Yeah, that's great.
We could, what we would do then is work through the superintendent because she has the list and ask her to come up, ask you some sort of process to put, include a student.
Exactly. And perhaps they could pick it like she just meant to.
I'd love to see them, because I, and I'm not sure how long they've been meeting, if they've been meeting virtually regularly where they've started to get to know each other. I know the groups previously by the end of their time together know each other pretty well.
It's quite a camaraderie.
And would be, would be more than able to select among themselves.
So we'll, we'll, we'll check with Mrs. Bird. I'll give her a call and, and we'll get that worked out. And then Mr. Bridges, if, if there's a permission form or something, we would, we've worked through you.
If we have a student who's eighteen, it's, I, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
But they won't be.
If it's someone under eighteen.
They won't be because she chose this year to do juniors so that when the new superintendent is placed, they could follow her or him into the next role. So she purposely this year
That was pretty smart.
Isn't that, I thought that was great. So yeah, so they're juniors. She is.
That's, that sounds really good. Thank you, Ms. Fortney, for bringing that up. Okay.
Anything else? Gentlemen, anything else?
Excellent.
Excellent.
Well, thank you very much once again for being here today. And for those folks that came in the audience to listen and kind of keep up with what we're doing. So at this point, we have no further business. Board members, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all for your very valuable input.